Special meeting of the Glendale City Council for August 20, 2013 being called ordered at 3:17 PM. We have a call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Your report, please.
Agenda for the August 20, 2013 special meeting of the city council is postponed on Thursday, August 15, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is next?
First item is minutes of the regular city council meeting.
Your motion. Second?
Second.
No discussion. Minutes of standard prejudice submitted. Next, please.
Next is city manager regarding award of contract for federal legislative advocacy services to a's motion awarding contract for federal legislative advocacy services to the firm of Carpe and Clay, Inc. for fiscal year 2013-14.
Let's do it, Cho.
Yes, sir. We have a series of items related to legislation for you this afternoon, the first of which is the results of an RFP process for a federal lobbyist. As you know, we currently do not have one. We are looking to re-enter that fray. So, an RFP was conducted with a number of proposals coming in. We have ranked those top three. And to give you the results of that process, our program supervisor Christine Powers will give you a brief staff report.
It's Powers.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of council, essentially, city manager laid out the process. Each of the firms were interviewed and ranked, as he said, a total of five of them, based on their experience and references, qualifications of their staff, customer service orientation, competitive costs, and overall likelihood of success. And based on this ranking, Carpe and Clay Incorporated stood out as the best candidate due to both their technical ability and their staff resources to achieve the city's goal. And therefore, staff does recommend that the contract be awarded to them. Their firm's core business is representing California agencies at a federal level. They represent public agencies, nonprofit institutions, and also represent local governments with profiles that are similar to the city of Glendale's. They have a productive working relationship with the California congressional delegation on a bipartisan basis, and they include existing relationships with a number of federal agencies such as FEMA and the Office of Management and Budget. That being said, while Carpe and Clay did stand out as the top firm, any of the top three firms listed in rank order on page four of your report will serve the city well. The proposed fees for each of the top three firms are included, along with their campaign finance disclosure forms. Thank you.
Your report. Mr. Quintero.
Actually, the, as indicated by Ms. Powers, the rankings in those top three really reflect a level of subjectivity that all three, with all due respect to all of the proponents, especially the three that emerged, one, two, and three, that they could do the job. So, if it's the council's pleasure, we can move forward in a different direction. I think staff's recommendation is that we adhere to that ranking of those top three. But if council wanted to move to the second or third person, that we would at least get direction from council at this meeting to determine at what level you would be willing to fund this program, because they are more expensive. I think the folks at Carpe and Clay from the results of the program had a great dialogue with the evaluation team, of which I was not a part. So, I can allow Ms.
Right. And I guess that was going to be my next question. It seems to me that before we take this move, I would like to meet at least the top-two finalists, or, I mean, I think there should be some interaction. These are essentially political consulting groups that we're hiring, and yet, none of us have really met the principals involved or had a say in the decision.
When did the council direct you to go out for RFPs for federal and state?
This was something that was brought up in last year's budget as one of the goals for the management services department, and was accomplished over the end of last fiscal year.
It was back in 2002. We directed the city manager to go to RFP. All the candidates submitted them, and we interviewed all the candidates, and at that time selected David Church. So, and we renewed with him every year, 2009. Are you saying that the deciding factor was what they proposed on their salaries?
Mayor Weaver, it was a multitude of things, including just the rapport, and pricing was a factor as well.
That's all printout for me. Mr. Najarian.
So, a couple of questions. When the RFP went out, does it indicate what weight was given to the pricing? And isn't that a usual practice to indicate what weight is given to each of the different categories?
Councilmember Najarian, I don't believe a particular weight was given to the pricing, but it was one of the factors that was included.
Okay. Clearly, it was one of the factors, because my experience with the federal lobbyists has been primarily with the David Church firm, and I'm more than happy with that firm. And when I saw that they were ranked fifth, or maybe sixth, I did inquire as to that, and I was told it was because their price was higher, a couple thousand dollars higher than the first-place or second-place firm. I also understand that the RFP indicates that there is a negotiation ability between the city and the chosen firm to negotiate price. So, I guess I have a couple of problems. Number one, if price was such a strong factor, why is it placed in the RFP that negotiation is available? And would that not give a false sense of weighting for a price figure if anyone, anyone who bid says, "Oh, well, if they like us, we can always work out the price later on"? That's number one. Okay. I have several things I'm going to throw out here. Number two, did you find all the bids to be responsive?
Of the six bids mentioned in the report?
Right.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Najarian.
Was the Carpe and, was the Carpe and Clay bid responsive?
Yes.
I remember, maybe about six months ago, I think we were doing an RFP in the city, and we had a great candidate, but the firm forgot to sign the paper at the end, the application. Is that in and of itself a non-responsive application, if it's not signed, when the bids are submitted and the RFP is submitted?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council, in that particular, so that was a bid that was required to comply with the lowest responsible bid requirements of our charter, our code, and the public contract code, a little bit different than RFP process where there's considerable flexibility built in for the city and the council to essentially negotiate particular terms.
Okay. So, that's my problem here. We're talking about negotiating terms, yet the factor which was most severe in moving the Church firm and others, the others down the list, was the price figure. And the number-one firm didn't even sign their application, or have it notarized, obviously. So, I have a problem with that process. I just think it's inherently non-responsive. How can you say that we're judging you on price, and this firm is good, and they have a good price, they weren't the lowest, but they have a good price, yet that application for, that response to the RFP isn't even signed? I mean, I got a problem with that. That just doesn't make sense, and it doesn't seem fair to the other firms that are perhaps crunching numbers and signing their name by a responsible member to that application. So, I have a problem with that. Let me continue. I do have a problem with the Carpe and Clay firm, to the extent, on two accounts. Number one, in San Diego County, they were accused and challenged of having a conflict of interest with the firm Blackwater. And the city of San Diego, they were representing the city, negotiating a training facility for Blackwater at the same time that they were representing Blackwater. Secondly, and most importantly, is in their representation of Blackwater, it has come to light and admitted by the CEO of Blackwater that Blackwater, being the paramilitary training organization that it is, trains the special forces of Azerbaijan. There is, and let's just end the conversation there for this city council candidate, this city council member, there is no way that I am going to cast a vote for any firm that in any way was involved, directly, indirectly, with the training of special forces of an enemy nation that is killing the ancestors, ongoing, and relatives, countrymen, if you will, of Armenia. So, let's just, but let me be clear about that. Sometimes I'm not clear, but let me be absolutely clear. Now, whether that representation ended several years ago, whether that work with Azerbaijan was condoned by the U.S. State Department, I don't care. I'm drawing the line there. And I'm sorry, Blackwater, and I'm sorry, Carpe and Clay, but you are not going to get my vote. Secondly, it has come to my attention that the Van Skoyak firm represents the Republic of Pakistan. And it just so happens that Pakistan is the one nation on this globe that does not recognize the Republic of Armenia. And they have, they have actively lobbied for the Republic of Pakistan. So, Van Skoyak, I'm sorry, but there is no way that I'm going to vote for a firm that represents a foreign country that does not recognize the Republic of Armenia. Okay? So, that's a non-starter for me.
Can I, just for clarity's sake?
Yes.
To go to a couple of, Mr. Carpe is here from Carpe and Clay, and certainly, I would not put words in his mouth and talk about their corporate structure or their corporate dealings. And I don't know if we have anybody from Van Skoyak here. However, with respect to the ranking, what we have presented to you is the results of an RFP process that was undertaken by a cross-section of your professional staff from different departments dealing with legislative matters. And from that perspective, and on the strength of those interviews, on five different criteria or dimensions, one of which being pricing, the rankings were as outlined in your, in your staff report. However, because some of the sensitivities were drawn out previously by council members, and really, in reflection of something Mr. Quintero said, and it's absolutely true that this is a, at the end of the day, a consulting firm that works in a political dimension for the city council, what we did not do is provide you a single firm. We provided you those top three on an objective basis, in terms of their evaluation. With all due respect to Mr. Carpe, I think they presented themselves very well. They emerged from that process as the leader of that pack, followed by Van Skoyak, followed by Ferguson. So, it's to the council's entire discretion and pleasure whether or not you would keep or eliminate any one or any three of those proponents. And we follow, in other circumstances, the rule of three, and we gave you the top three here, just in keeping with our form and practice. To the extent that pricing is something that was malleable, depending on what the, what the recommendation would ultimately be, it was the final dimension following a series of criteria as outlined by Ms. Powers, and that was something we felt that we could negotiate in good faith, if in fact, we got past those first four ranking criteria. So, I would encourage you not to get too hung up on the criteria as it's laid out, on the pricing criteria, because that's something we would endeavor to do with any of our professional services contracts to the betterment of the city, to seek the absolute lowest price that we could get, because it is negotiable and something that's distinct from a public works contract. So, what I would want the council to take away is that there's no real wrong answer in this. We have, we sent out how many RFPs? How many requests? How many different proponents?
Dozens.
Dozens. Got backs these five, five or six?
Six.
Five, six, that were responsive? I don't know. As I said at the beginning, I don't know that you can necessarily make a mistake. We do think, though, as we evaluated these, there was, there was a clear distinction in the top three. So, it is to the council. Now, I can't do anything today with respect to bringing you the principles of the three different, top-three firms, or the six firms, for that matter. However, as I say, you do have, I believe, two of them are here today, and then you have experience working with a third. So, I think you have what, you have a good deal of information with which to make a decision.
Like, yeah, I won't be voting for any of the top three, but this is, relax, ma'am.
Well, interesting information about the top-two candidates. I don't know where that information came from. If it came from one of the other candidates, that leaves kind of a bad taste in my mouth, personally. I've worked with two out of this group, Ferguson and Turridge, mostly with Ferguson, who I, I mean, I think both were very good. I had an excellent relationship with Ferguson. I thought they did a very good job. Certainly, the price that they're giving is quite a bit lower than what the other, what Turridge is giving. I would be fine with going with them today, if that pleases the council. It eliminates the problematic top-two. It would be good to see if they would match that top price. You know, perhaps they would. So, that would be, you know, I'm fine with voting for, I don't know the other groups. I would have had no problem voting for them. I'm, you know, if the other members are uncomfortable, that's fine. I'd go with number three, with Ferguson. So, that would be my, my vote.
Mr. Sinanian.
Mr. Ochoa, I just want to confirm that, so the price that's proposed by any of them, or Ferguson specifically, is subject to negotiation? So, that could?
Yes, sir. And as a matter of fact, if the council was inclined to do something other than what was recommended, what I would ask for is, is direction as to which of the firms, and thus, we would go and try to negotiate a lower price, because your resolution of appropriation is for the price offered by Carpe and Clay. So, if you are not moving forward with Carpe and Clay, we would have to carry over till September, which is fine, because they're on recess now, I believe, the congresses. And we would endeavor to negotiate the best price possible with whomever you select.
Okay. Because I will not vote for, for the reasons outlined by Councilmember Najarian, I cannot and I will not vote for Van Skoyak or for Carpe and Clay. And I have the least amount of information in terms of having experience, you know, working with any of these, but I understand that Ferguson Group has represented the city in the past and has done a fine job. So, I'm inclined to agree with Councilmember Friedman, that if this is acceptable to the other council people, and especially if we can negotiate the price down, I don't see why we shouldn't go forward with that.
Well, for me, I won't be supporting them either. I went back and pulled out where we hired lobbyists back in 2002. We awarded to David Church. Worked with him every single year. Of 2007, I found another report, and this report was, the panel was all department heads, and, or all except one. And this time, the staff is good, but it was not department heads doing the interviews, which concerned me some. But in the 2000, 2007 report, it is written, "As councils are aware, the city has successfully received federal appropriations amounting to almost $4 million. Staff is recommending the city continue the services of David Church and Associates based on the city's experience, the responsive level of services provided, achievements to date, and most importantly, because a number of projects are currently in the pipeline." That was written. And in 2009, it was written again, recommending David Church. Interview panel has concluded that the top-two candidates are represented in the rank order of David Church Association, followed by the second one. The, and it was recommending David Church continue on doing it. And then I looked at the criteria this year that we're listing down. I don't see why David Church and Associates don't fit that criteria. The contract I found in the past, it says proposed salary. It doesn't say this is the amount. It says proposed, which means negotiate, and I believe in the past, David Church did negotiate. So, I cannot figure how they ended up last, other than for salary, what they're proposing. So, I support David Church, because I know him, I know his work, and the city's own reports say he was the best.
How many years did Ferguson work for us?
One, I think.
I cannot say, sir.
Three years.
Three, before we cut the, cut it out of the budget.
Right. Well, my interaction, what I found about the Ferguson firm, and it wasn't like I was interacting with them on an even monthly basis, but I liked the reporting that they did. I found them to be very professional in their, in their approach to things, laying out exactly what they were doing. And my interactions with them in Washington, I thought were exemplary. I mean, the way they were able to put us in front of all of the decision-makers and the different committees and so forth. So, for me, I'm prepared to nominate the Ferguson Group today, and hopefully, we can get started as soon as possible. It's been quite a while since we've had any representation. So, I make a motion to have the Ferguson Group be our federal representatives.
Just a quick question for, I mean, I want to second that motion, but a quick question in terms of how this renegotiation of the price down is going to happen. If we nominate them and vote on it today, we're not stuck with the amount, are we?
No. We would come back to you in September with a negotiated amount. Council would be able to accept or reject that and/or consider the balance of the field.
Okay. That's my motion.
Okay. And I'll be voting against it.
No, I'll second it.
Question?
I do have a question here. So, I mean, let me get this straight here. Was the price proposal a factor in the ranking that is before us?
A factor, yes, sir.
Not the only factor.
Not the only four, in a four.
A heavy.
But we're saying that that price factor really doesn't matter, because we're going to come back and negotiate with you anyway. Does that not create an inconsistency and a, how can you rank someone on a factor that you say we're going to come back and negotiate? Give us a proposal. Give us a, you know, where would you start your negotiation?
You wouldn't necessarily negotiate with them. If they were already lowest and low in the market, you may accept that. That may be the last, best, final offer from them. But with respect to experience, qualifications of staff, customer service orientation, those being the other, and then the final item being overall likelihood of success, being kind of the summary criteria, that's what the evaluation team looked at. And that was in their, in their professional opinion.
Okay. So, understood. So, some people say a likelihood of success can be, is oftentimes judged by the success in the past. What did the Ferguson Group get us in the three? How many years were their advocates?
Three.
Three years. What did they get us that, let me bring up the Church Group, that the Church Group was not able to get us? And did they surpass the Church Group in their success for the city? I don't know that answer. But it seems like there was some, you referred to some dollar amount, four million or something like that.
Let me, let me give my opinion, that I find that...
Wait, it's a question. It's a question. So, what is it that Ferguson got us?
Other than ISAs which we're getting?
Because we're judging, and it's relevant, because we're talking about future success, probability of success. So, that's why I'm asking that, not to cloud the analysis.
Absolutely know exactly where you're coming from. With respect to the different firms who have represented us in the past, we, the city of Glendale took on a relationship with the Ferguson Group at a very interesting time. That was when earmarks were going away and ARA was kicking in. When, we talk about the past experience with David Church and Associates, and what we've been able to gain from our relationship with them, that was primarily, actually solely, through earmarks. Those no longer exist. Our way of trying to get any, our hands on any kind of federal funding is really through the competitive grant market. And I think that was one of the main factors that, that we, I as one of the people who was on this, on this panel, reviewing the various proposals, we're looking at. With this new landscape, which firm is, are we going to be able to work with best? Which firm has the best tools currently to be able to help us be in a position to get our hands on any kind of grant funding that's out there? Because it goes to speak to their relationships with the various different administrations at the federal level, their understanding of the various different administrative processes, and overall staffing as well. I mean, we've gone down to the point of determining how many, how many employees the organization has. With respect to the Ferguson Group, I can, I could speak to one of the main things that I recall interviewing them, was they've had a significant reduction in their in-house employees, but they've had a significant increase in the number of clients that they service. When, when I'm looking at recommending a firm that's going to be able to represent us and be able, and we have access to them, that's one of the things that I, as a raider, was looking at. Are we going to get the level of service that we expect from them? And we very well likely may, but it goes down to trying to do this in the most objective way that we possibly can. So, I don't know how else to address that particular question than what I just said.
Part of the reason we switched to Ferguson Group initially, correct me, was because of former Councilman John Draymond. Am I not mistaken in that? Is that he very much wanted Ferguson Group and was very much opposed to David Church. Was that not what?
I would disagree with that.
I don't remember that.
Let him answer the question. Let him answer the question.
It took a majority of council to select the firm, that's all.
What other cities does that firm Ferguson support around here?
In the San Gabriel Valley, I think there's a number of them. I can tell you, though, as they look at the list, what Mr. Talktalian described in terms of the relationship of earmark and funding, and the advent of the, or the demise of the earmark process, was something I experienced firsthand in my last, in my last organization as well. When earmarks were around, we received quite a bit of funding, ironically enough, from the Church and Associates Group. We ended up switching to a different firm, and right about that time, earmarks went away, and with it, much of the funding did. It was not a Glendale phenomenon.
So, what other cities does Ferguson support or represent?
Mayor Weaver, while I don't have a full list in front of me, some of the more prominent cities that are closest in resemblance to Glendale would be Roseville, Oceanside, Folsom, Laguna Beach, Inglewood, and the Long Beach Transit.
And which ones does Church have?
Bear with me.
About Alhambra.
Cities of Beverly Hills, Torrance, Redondo Beach, Palmdale, and Burbank.
Burbank, our neighbor. Certain items that we always go for affect more than just our city. They're regional to the, to the area. So...
Mr. Weaver, I had my hand up for a question, or in this case, a comment. Well, let me say to the...
Were you finished, Mr. Najarian?
I will.
Now?
I will save my time.
This is succeeding.
Let me say that, you know, the earmark issue on more than, well, for sure, I know on one occasion, that the firm said it got us this earmark, et cetera, et cetera. I know that, in fact, our congressional representative was the one that, that carried the water for us. And so, I think it was always easy in those earmark days to latch on to whatever, you know, money came into the city and said, "Oh, I did it, I did it." But I know at least on one occasion, that wasn't the case. And in fact, Congressman Schiff was the one, and his staff, were the ones that did the, that did the work. And as for Ferguson, I, like I say, I'm not, you know, I don't interact with them on a regular basis, but during the period, they did represent us. I thought they did an excellent job. More specifically, I was impressed with the professionalism and the way they, they set out the campaign for what was good for the city of Glendale. And to, in terms of having a lot of cities, and I think that, you know, that you represent, that includes our state. that includes our state reps. If you have a lot of cities, let's say Burbank, well, gee, there may be something that we're in competition with, against the City of Burbank. And I wouldn't want to have a firm that's representing Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, and Arcadia and all of the other cities. I'm not sure that that works out that well for us either.
All I can say is if earmarks went away, that didn't put David Church out of business. All the, all of the lobbyists are working under the same premise, there's no earmarks, they go a different way. So I haven't seen anything to show me that Church and Associates isn't doing the same job that they did before when there were earmarks. So...
Okay, well, I've made my motion and...
Well, I'm just waiting to see if anybody else wants to make comments, Mr. Quintero. We know your position, we know mine. Are there any comments to be made? More?
I would have loved, yes, I would have loved to have the breakdown of all the different categories and the rankings. You know, these are, these are individuals that we're going to be working with when we go to Washington on a very intimate basis, on a very concentrated time schedule and intense moments. And I'm not sure if we had the full breakdown in the previous packet two, three weeks ago. But, I mean, what, what I'm hearing is that you've done a ranking, and this is how they are, all we have is the final results. We don't have the box scores through the different categories. So I would have loved to have that. I mean, I think there's a lot that we can say when we look at that. So I feel a little bit of a disadvantage as to how closely the remaining four firms were ranked and scored. But, I mean, we saw the price, price was out there, but the others would have been certainly. And who was on the, who was on the review committee? Let me just...
That was our Deputy City Manager, John Tocchalian, Chief Assistant General Manager, Steve Linds, Assistant City Attorney, Doreen Margarosian, and Executive Analyst, April Fitzpatrick.
I would just hope we ever do this again, it comes back the way it used to be. The council does it right here.
Well, it's certainly the council's pleasure not to do anything today and to go select somebody that you could get behind.
Well, let's see, there's a motion on the floor, we'll find out first.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there consensus, at least, that we do need these services? Because it sounds like at some point we were getting earmarks from Washington, but it was thanks to Adam Schiff's efforts, but we were employing a lobbyist. Is, are we going to hear two years from now that whatever we were getting was really thanks to Adam Schiff?
Oh, no, that's one case.
I'm asking a question, I mean...
It's one case.
I, I think it's a, it's a great question indeed, because I think we are increasingly becoming more involved on policy matters, whereas in the past, it would seem to me was primarily with respect to dollars and cents vis a vis the earmark process. If only on the healthcare system alone, that would be something that we wouldn't want to play a role in. But with respect to the Clean Water Act, as it impacts the NPDS system with clean air as it relates to our waste energy facility, there are a number of fronts that increasingly Washington DC will have a very direct hand in. And to the extent that our legislators need to know on policy issues what is important to the City of Glendale, and all cities for that matter, they certainly appreciate the interaction with our representatives in DC and Sacramento for that matter.
So this is an essential service that we...
It, it is increasingly an essential service, but your point is so very well taken that it will less be about, I suspect, less be about grants and dollars and cents returning back to us as opposed to shaping policy going forward.
And I'm sure all five are capable of doing that. Something else I was going to say, now I can't even remember what it was. Well, I've made my piece. Oh, yes, one of the reasons we took it off was the budget. This money's coming out of reserves. Is that in the budget?
No, sir. This is coming out of the management services.
It'll be a recurring cost.
Within our contract for services, professional services.
So, that's why I'm wondering why we didn't know more about it until we get this report.
So would we approve a final contract once the price is negotiated?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Let's take a rule and find out where we are.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
No. No. Okay, next, please.
Three is city manager regarding award of contract for state legislative advocacy services. Three A is motion awarding contact, contract for state legislative advocacy services to the firm of Emmanuel Jones and Associates for fiscal year 2013-14. Three B is resolution appropriating $71,000 to fund state legislative advocacy contract.
There's nothing different here than the federal level, except does Mr. Quintero have anything to say about Emmanuel Jones?
I have questions. Since we needed to know who Carpe was representing, I want to know who Emmanuel Jones represents in the legislature, and anywhere else for that matter. Who are their clients? Is there someone from Emmanuel Jones here? Yeah, we can ask the principal.
They do represent the City of Burbank, which was a strike in your last announcement.
That's right.
Councilmember Quintero, I can certainly let Mr. Jones answer any questions, but the client list does include City of Burbank, City of Pasadena, Cities of Lake Forest, Los Angeles, Sacramento, San Marcos, San Rafael, Stockton, Wheatland, the County of Amador, and the Town of Truckee.
Well, that's minus two.
And how...
And Pasadena.
How about, I'd like to know what private or nonprofit organizations they represent. He's there, he can come to them, podium. I'm just curious, what trade associations and other...
NRA.
Organizations, yeah, including...
We represent no foreign governments, we're solely in Sacramento. We do represent, the only other client we have is the LA Gay and Lesbian Center, and we're working with them to build an affordable housing for gay seniors across the street from their center. So all those contracts are all government with that one exception. And the City of LA is not a lobbying contract. By, by charter, the mayor does all the lobbying. So we are asked by the city council to provide them with legislative information, so we do information reporting for the City of LA City Council.
Okay. And no trade associations, manufacturers, or foreign?
No, no, we don't have a PAC. We don't have trade associations. We have Burbank and Pasadena, as you know, and they're, you know, both very excited of having, having Glendale back with this firm, because we do have a lot of commonality with the ISIS project, with the recycled water project with Pasadena.
But how about to the question of, I agree that that's a plus. How about to the question of we're going for the same grant, let's say, the three, quote, sister cities are going for the same grant? What do you do then? How do you go about lobbying for a finite amount of money?
Sure, sure. We had that exact same situation with the library bond. We had, seven of our five clients went for library grants. What we did is we worked with each one of those different cities to come to Sacramento, meet with all the decision makers. We gave them all the opportunities, and five out of the seven got the grants. So they were competing against, it was a very finite amount of money, but there were, you know, 100 cities competing along with our, seven of our own clients. Burbank was one of the cities that didn't get one of the grants because their number that they wanted was 18 and a half million dollars, and there just was not room for them.
Steve. Any other comments? Oh, boy, no controversy, you're lucky. Is there a motion? A motion?
Yeah, I'll...
Three A and two, A, three...
Three A and B?
Yes.
Is also coming out of the reserves. Okay, roll call.
Wait, is it reserves or management services?
Well, it's, it is unallocated, it would ultimately come from unallocated resources in the management services budget, to the extent that we have savings, which we very often do, it would, we, we, in that particular line item, we may run over in professional services and then make it up on our bottom line through salary savings for positions that are unfilled. So to say that it's coming from reserves, that is yet to be determined. So just...
The unused money would otherwise be returned through the...
Exactly.
And of course, they'll try to negotiate this contract down too. Right?
This amount has been negotiated down, just as, well, as we are recommending it to the council. So we are recommending this amount based on what was submitted to us previously and working with the folks at Emmanuel Jones.
Okay, just Sinanian.
Really just want to thank staff for going through this hard ass process. I know it's not hard, it's not easy. You have to look at a lot of stats and a lot of applicants, and I think you've done a good job, one way or another.
And my last comment is I hope next time the council does it like we used to do it, and that we get the submission of all applicants, and this council, as we did in the past, can pick candidates rather than having the staff do it for us. Okay, roll call.
Well, I, I agree with Mr. Sinanian. I think staff did a fine job, but ultimately it is a political decision that we're making, and so I do think it needs to be, or at least there need to be briefings with the city council at a bare minimum.
Okay, roll call.
Who was the second on that?
Hold on a second.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
All right. Next, please.
Item four on this agenda, city manager regarding consideration of proposed 2013-14 legislative platform. Four A is motion providing direction to staff on a preferred option for adopting legislative platform.
Mr. Quintero?
Yes, sir. This is an item that, that we would hope to secure. It seems rather general and innocuous, but let me explain why we, we have it before you. The legislative platform such as it is, is really a reflection of what the city council priorities are as they've been adopted in the budget. The reason why we want to have this as a guiding policy document for purposes of legislation is that, as you well know, many of you send to me, send to Ms. Powers, pieces of legislation that either come through the League of California Cities or come through any of the professional affiliations or organizations that you may belong to, or something that you happen to come across. Very often, there is a need to send a letter of support or opposition, but by the council's policy, until it comes to the council, any letter of support or opposition would have to come from staff. I would send a letter, or one of the respective department directors would send a letter pertaining to their particular program area, as opposed to something that is the, that carries the full force of the city council. And I can tell you, and I'm sure you know this already, but when you speak to elected legislators, nothing carries the gravitas as much as the comment and letter from a fellow elected official, not staff. And so what we are hoping to do is to provide you with this overarching, big tent guide of the types of things that we would like to have your blessing to support, so that as requests that fit this type of profile come in on, on individual pieces of legislation, we might prepare a letter for the mayor's signature, and that the mayor might be able then, or any member of the council for that matter, be able then to send that letter without having to come back to the full council. Recognizing, of course, that if there was something that, at least in our experience, demonstrated that there would be a split of opinion on the council, it would indeed come back to the city council. So I would give you as an example, plastic bag bans. Mr. Najarian, in the past, has not been fully supportive of, I think he had voted, no. If something came through from Fed EPA or Cal EPA to expand that, that ban, and they asked for letters of support from cities like Glendale, that is something we would bring back to this council for you to act on. However, if there was an item, like the item, there's a resolution on today's agenda dealing with suggestions from local police departments on ways to refine the AB 109 realignment that is currently underway and causing us so many headaches, we would like to be able to, on that, where there has been great unanimity from the city council in what your interests have been, to be able to prepare that letter, send it off with either the mayor or an individual council member's signature, so, rather than have to bring it back to this body so that it remains timely and we can get that information in. That essentially is the outline and profile of this legislative platform.
Do you have anything to add to that, Ms. Powers?
No, I believe Mayor Weaver, the city manager covered it all.
I do have a couple of comments myself. It says here the letters of support opposition will be signed by the mayor. If the mayor is unavailable, they'll be signed by the city manager with notification, city council. I don't agree. I don't know where the mayors of this city disappeared to for weeks on end, so I think it ought to be the mayor, if not the mayor pro tem, because we're the ones that are on the hook for what we say. So, that changed. Also, the priorities that are listed here, are they in the priority order that we're concerned about?
They are in the order as adopted in the budget documents, sir.
Okay, because we had a survey taken of the public in which the highest ranking that they had on there was physically safe and prepared for emergencies, highest, and the second was robust improvement plan for streets, traffic, water, and power. I don't see that being high on the priority. Public streets or whatever rated number four beneath an informed and engaged community. So I don't agree with that. And number seven, infrastructure.
These aren't ranked, I don't think.
They're in here, I'm reading.
Yeah, I know, but I don't...
These are in the order that they're in your budget. The, the information you're referring to?
I don't agree with this, we're adopting it now.
No, but Dave, I don't think they mean that it's ranked, it's not like number one...
That's what I just asked, if it's ranked by the emphasis that you will put on our lobbyists.
No, it's, and this really isn't necessarily, the importance of this list isn't so much the relative ranking as opposed to the council holds very dear fiscal responsibility.
These are pre-approved ideas that...
There's only so much federal dollars going around, and where are we going to put our emphasis on informing and engage public, or on streets, or transportation? I think they, we obviously, or they rate higher, and the survey says they do.
Understanding that that survey did not ask folks specifically about your city council priorities as they're, as they're outlined in the budget document that you approved, because a lot of folks on, in the context of a, in the context of a telephone survey, might not know what balanced quality housing might refer to, any more than if, when we look at satisfaction with the police department. People generally know what a police department is.
I, I know the people elect us, and I know we went into retreat, and what I said was high, wasn't ranked high, and I'm seeing the same list now. People elected me, and I think that representing them, I can have a consensus, or I can believe that the transportation and safety are rated higher than an informed and engaged community, or some of the other things on here. What I want is a city that I live in, I want safety, number one. I want streets that I can ride on. Those are the two highest, and they're not here, rated high. I hope there's, if Washington, they put the emphasis where the public believes it. I don't think the public on this survey are that dumb. They rate these things the highest. At least all my lifetime, I have. Well, I, I've made my piece.
Okay, wait.
Mr. Quintero, now you say yours. You live up on the...
No, I mean, I just want to clear it up. It is my understanding that all nine of these points were be, will be pursued by our, by our federal...
Of course.
State, so it's, we're not going to put more of a ranking on fiscal than we are...
Except on the federal budget, it's very large and complicated. You're not going to get everything you push for, so I want the emphasis...
But I guess what I'm saying is we're going to push for everything equally, we're not going to push...
I hope not.
Well, to, to Mr. Quintero's point, to the extent that the, the state is, is going to back away from the Brown Act, they're not going to fund the Brown Act. Because informed and engaged community is one of your city council priorities, to the extent that there is a piece of legislation out there, we would prepare a letter for the mayor, the mayor pro tem's signature that says City of Glendale is opposed to backing away from the, from the Brown Act.
I understand, I'm thinking more the federal level. I dealt with the federal government, I prepared budgets for more than 10, 15 years, I know how Washington works to some degree. And if you try to get everything, you're not going to get... And if you try to get everything, you're not going to get anything. So I want the emphasis of Washington, where the public in this city have said they want it, and where I've always wanted it in my 74 years.
You are very much in luck there, sir, as you well know, because the dollars that come from the feds primarily still, at this point today, come in the area of public safety by way of juvenile justice grants and in infrastructure, just as you articulated.
Good. I just hope our lobbyists understands that totally.
I'm sure they will.
I'll move four A.
Second.
Okay, no more discussion. Roll call.
Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye, with the emphasis. Okay, what's next?
Private city manager regarding consideration of resolution calling upon the governor and legislature to enter into discussion with the League of California Cities and the California Police Chiefs Association representatives to identify and act strategies that will ensure the success of public safety, realignment from a local municipal law enforcement perspective. Five A is a resolution of support.
Mr. Ochoa going to Mr. Povolitis?
Captain Povolitis will give you a very brief overview of the refinements we want to make.
I wish you the best of luck in Sacramento on this.
Carl Povolitis, the captain with the police department, and we'll go for a very brief, I think. Mr. Ochoa sort of teed this up in the last comment that, I mean, realignment is here, and we've certainly had our share of challenges with it, and the county continues to have its share of challenges as the state has closed the front doors on the state prisons and opened the back doors, sending more people back to the county for local supervision. And, you know, in essence...
And the governor is...
Putting the responsibility now on the local and county governments to deal with the resulting impacts. What we're here today is asking for your support to ask that the legislature and the governor enter into discussions with the California League of Cities and the California Police Chiefs Association to make some refinements to that law so that if, you know, that realignment has a fair chance of success, we can do that. This really falls into three categories that we're looking at. The first has to do with funding. Even the governor's acknowledged that realignment needs to be fully funded, and for us to deal with these issues, they need to commit to that, to fully funding that so that local governments can deal with the fallout from that. The second category really deals with some legislative adjustments. We talk about the non-serious, non-sex, non-violent offenders that have been put on community supervision and are being handled at the local jails, but right now that's being handled only by their last offense. It does not include a consideration of their criminal history, mental health history, et cetera. And looking forward, that really needs to be adjusted from our perspective, that it needs to be a little bit more global in terms of whether or not they're eligible for that and how we, and how we deal with that. And then secondly, with the overcrowding of the jails, opening up facilities like the Glendale jail for flash incarcerations, so that that facility would be eligible for that short-term incarceration of people on probation. And then the final category is really there are some challenges in terms of trying to determine the effectiveness. As you start looking at the LA County data, we're getting down to the point where it's almost two-thirds of the people probably will not successfully compete probation. One in three will make it off without reoffending. Those other two-thirds will end up going through that process somewhere. So, but statewide, trying to get the oversight effectiveness there, getting some common definitions and getting some review into the processes essential. So that's really the three broad categories that we're kind of looking at. There are a few more specifics in there, if you'd like me to go into those. But again, we're urging your support to have the governor and the state legislature enter into discussions with the League of Cities and the California Police Chiefs Association.
I mean, I support all of that, but since the governor took on the judicial wing and lost, looks like he didn't want to release as many, but the judicial side says, yes, you will. I guess one judge or whatever sits there and decides the fate of the rest of the population of California, putting criminals out on the street and not caring, which I've, that's, I know that's...
I'd say sort of a parallel issue, and I understand where the governor was, and he may have lost, but I think from the perspective of your police department, as they're being released, we're going to have to, we're going to have to deal with the issue from a public safety thing. So having some of these adjustments made in terms of the funding and the adjustments in legislation as to how we deal with some of those individuals would be helpful to us.
I just, I clearly understand that and support it. I just am upset with the judicial branch in government.
It is, has its challenges.
That turns a blank ear or whatever, closed ears to the problem that exists in the state and doesn't care. It's amazing what our system government does. Mr. Quintero?
Mr. Weaver, like I did before, I want to ask Captain Povolitis, does he also represent the Private Pilots Association, Community College professors? Is there any need to...
No, I'm here representing the police department.
I wanted to double check.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll move the item.
At five A, resolution support.
Can I take a quick comment?
Yeah, quick one.
Last month, I believe it was, I went to Sacramento with the Independent Cities Association there. I went with two other council members from two other cities, and realignment for all of the member agencies, we did a little poll of our priorities, and realignment was everybody's number one concern, the effects of realignment. And I will say that we met with many representatives in Sacramento, Senate and legislative, from different sides of the aisle, Republicans and Democrats. And there were a few who were sympathetic to our issues, but there were many who vehemently denied that there were any effects, negative effects of realignment, and that if they were, they were not the fault of the legislation but the fault of our county and the way that they disperse funds or operate their jails. So, and there's a lot of denial and a lot of people who voted for this who now have ownership and don't want to admit that there are any problems. And that's a shame, because when you have every city in Los Angeles County saying that this has been a problem for them, something is going wrong. From my perspective, I don't care whether it's at the county level or at the state level or with this legislation or with the funding, we just need to have it fixed. So this is an important resolution, but please bring that message that we believe that there's a problem, and someone needs to start doing something about it. Because when we have offenders who are breaking into people's houses and being arrested and coming back and doing the same crime a week or two later because there's no place, no one will take them into jail because it's a nonviolent offense, that's a problem for our community.
Yes. Maybe the release ought to be, release all these prisoners to Sacramento, let them deal with it. Like, see how it is when they go into their neighborhoods. Unbelievable that they think that there's no problem. Well, just goes to show Sacramento is not representing the cities they supposedly represent, turning a blind eye. That's why the approval rating at the state and federal level are so low, is they're not listening to the public, so many things. By the way, I went to the League of California Cities three, four years ago, and that was the number one topic on the agenda. It's early releases coming, look out. Here it is, and we're feeling the impacts. I guess it's going to get worse. Let's create some new ways of handling it. Good luck. And now, there's been a motion, right? Second. Roll call.
Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
Item six, the city manager regarding consideration of resolution opposing closure and sale of the Glendale post office located at 313 East Broadway. Six A is a resolution of opposition.
Okay, who wants to save the post office? Mr. Ochoa?
We're following on council's directive to prepare a resolution to express your will. That's precisely what this does.
Any one of the three options, is that what you're saying? Or, I mean, anything is better than nothing.
Well, yes. I mean, we would like to send off the resolution as it's prepared, explaining that we are adamantly opposed to the closure and sale of the downtown post office.
So we put all three options in and then hope for the best.
Yes.
It's a historic, historic structure. So I guess whatever happens, nobody's going to tear it down. Just adaptive reuse. Mr. Friedman?
I asked for this to be brought forward. I think not only is it important in terms of the building, which is very beloved in our community and has protections for the exterior but not the interior of the building, there's also no protection that that building will be kept for any public use and the public will be allowed access. But having a post office, a central post office in our downtown, we have a couple of thousand of new apartment units coming in, is very, very important for our residents. And a full-service post office, not a stand in a Walgreens where you go in and buy stamps but can't do express mail and, you know, something that people are used to, that has the windows and the boxes and you can do everything, and that's our central post office. I use it all the time, and I know many people in the community do. And it's a shame what's going on with the US Postal Service. I think a lot of this, it sounds like, is self-created by the rules that govern the post office. I doubt this resolution's going to carry much weight with anybody, but I think it's important that we make our stand and say this is important to us as a community. Washington, listen to us. So that's what this resolution does, and I'm glad that my colleagues support it.
Well, I used to go there back in the 1940s with my father, because he would do all his mass mailing on the backside of the post office. That's where you hid all the package submittals. One thing I do know about that post office, inadequate parking. So any adaptive reuse, or whatever you go into, we're going to have to look at the parking and where we're going to shovel it off to, because onsite, they don't have it.
Mr. Weaver, I was going to say that, that that business still goes on. If you look at the back of the post office, as you mentioned, I mean, there's business being transacted on a regular basis. Where are all of those business people going to go? Pasadena, or, and, you know, they're going to have to drive a distance to do their weekly mailings.
One last thing.
One last thing.
Our postal employees in Glendale, I think, are wonderful, and I just want to make a shout out to them, because they give really great service. They get out of their vehicles, they always check the box, they'll come downstairs, you know, I have it up and downstairs. They could leave the packages upstairs, but they know it's safer to bring it downstairs. I found out from someone who lives in Santa Monica that in Santa Monica, the postal workers are now not taking mail. They're not taking mail from people's homes. And she asked her postal worker, well, don't you come and take the mail when the flag's up? And he says, no, by law, I don't have to, and I choose not to. And this is what they're doing there now, which is, I hope no one gets any ideas here, but I can't imagine the Glendale postal workers doing that, because they always go above and beyond. And at that post office, they were out of supplies in the front, the window was closed. I went to the back, because they work late, you know, after the windows are closed, they're still in the back working. And I said, I just need to get a priority mail envelope, and there's none inside. And they said, oh, don't worry, we'll go get, I'll go get it for you. And then, even though they were closed, they said, look, if you want to just buy the stamp now, you know, I'll go ahead and take the pa-